...special virtual meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Public participation, if you would like to see this live, please go online to www.facebook.com/totucketTV. Use Facebook, post or email, comment to T-W-O-O-T-T-O-N@northbranfordschools.org. Can we salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice touch Vince.
Thanks Vince.
We need a roll call vote. I believe Mary's on the call, correct? She's not? Okay. Alright, um, I'll take it. Shawna Holzer, Chair, here. Beth Sienna.
You're on mute somehow.
I was still on mute.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Marcy Anofrio?
Here.
Vince Mace?
Here.
Jana Balsamo?
Yeah, here.
And Cindy Rice?
Here.
Okay, I think I got everybody. We're all here. Full board. Okay, approval of the minutes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 20th, 2020 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On the February meeting, Beth Sienna was present. And then if you go to pages five and six, it doesn't show where she voted, or it doesn't even show where there. So I don't know what happened to her on those events, seconded the motion right after the motion was approved. If you look on pages five, she received her name.
Beth, were you at that meeting?
She voted, or abstained from voting. So I'm just trying to figure out what happened to her, that's all.
On the February 20th, I was there, yes.
Okay.
She was present.
Okay.
Do you remember abstaining on those votes?
No. I don't believe, the only thing I abstained from was, I was not at the meetings in January 5th, the budget meeting. So I had to abstain because I wasn't there.
Right, that, you abstained from those, so I'm trying to figure out what happened to you on these other motions. But you notice on the bottom page, on page five, you seconded a motion.
Right, I was on.
Seconded a motion. Yeah, so you're not there.
Hey guys, I'm just gonna hold the conversation one minute. We're getting a lot of feedback. What do you need me to do? We get feedback.
What did we do different?
I don't know.
I didn't touch anything.
I turned this off.
I didn't touch anything.
I walked out of the room. Guys, talk?
How is this any better?
As soon as I speak, there's feedback.
There's no feedback when I'm speaking?
No.
Okay, well, I'm not picking up any audio from here.
You're not picking up any audio from here? Oh.
This?
Next to Marcy's person. On the Marcy's.
Is this better?
This better?
Is Marcy too close?
Can you kill the speakers on that? Start it down.
Volume.
Okay, now. If Marcy moves over, is she too close?
No, she's already muted.
I think if you mute your, detect the person that's talking, then some of that feedback goes away.
Try muting just Marcy.
Marcy's already muted. Muted already.
It's the microphone. It's the speakers that's doing it. That's the problem. Because when I turned down the speaker, there was no feedback.
The same, so, February of the day, before I walked out of the room, you found it, the audio was coming out of this.
Yep, it is back now doing that. But we didn't touch anything.
It's not coming out of these speakers. It's coming out of that computer.
And we didn't touch anything. That computer's not anything.
Well.
So see the ceiling?
Okay.
Yes, not connected to anything.
How about that? Someone's talking?
I'm muted, aren't I?
We can't have a meeting like this. We're all talking.
Yeah. Okay, so, one second. Hold on.
If we can't correct this, we will have to call the meeting. We can't have a meeting like this.
Well, we can stop Totucket TV and have our meeting without them.
Okay, now, before I walked out of the room before, this computer was controlling the output of this, right?
Yes.
Okay, can we do that again?
We'll just have to use this one for the video.
There's no background feed at this point. It sounds really good.
That's right.
Right, okay, just.
If you need to talk, you're going to have to speak loudly enough for that to pick you up.
Okay. Legitimately, nobody moved.
No, no, it's okay.
Exactly.
Did we send Mary a Zoom invite?
Yes. Vince, can you repeat, I'm sorry to say, but I couldn't get the minutes, what you were saying about page five and six with?
So what, I have the minutes here. I have the minutes here. So what he's saying is Beth is marked as present.
No, I'm not even down there.
No, in the original attendance, she's marked as present. Then two of the motions, because she wasn't at the meeting, she abstained from the minutes. But then after that, for the rest of them, like here, there was only four people. She doesn't have Beth listed at all. So somehow, Beth got dropped off of this. So we might need to table this to the next motion and let Mary, that's my suggestion, that we table this, this meeting's minutes.
And let Mary?
And let Mary, yeah, see what happened. Does that sound okay?
So you know, it's pages five and six, there were two motions.
Yep.
Although Beth seconded the motion, there's two motions that they don't have her, how she voted.
Right.
Yep, okay.
Don't want to lose you, Beth.
Yeah, no.
No, no, I saw the same thing Vincent, that I had to abstain because I wasn't at the, for the minutes. But I was at the meeting of the 20th, but like Vincent said, Marcy made a motion, Jana seconded it, but I'm not down there as saying aye. And then the next one, I seconded, and I'm not down there as saying aye.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll withdraw my motion.
And we're gonna table it so that Mary can look into it and then the minutes. Because that's the best we can do at the moment. Okay.
Right.
Okay, then moving on, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 10th, 2020 special meeting as submitted.
All second, discussion? March 10th minutes, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstained on that because I wasn't there Shawna.
Okay.
Thank you. It's Carolyn.
I see you.
All right.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 1, 2020 special virtual meeting as submitted.
All second, discussion? Do we need to do a roll this? Because not everyone was on the call, I don't think. Can I just get a roll for the approval of those minutes? Shawna Holzer, yes. Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Jana Balsamo?
Abstained.
Beth Sienna?
Yes.
Marcy Anofrio? Okay, perfect. All right.
Shawna, Mary's on now.
Hi Mary, I was taking some minutes for you.
Thank you, and I watched you on Facebook, so I got the whole February thing. I apologize, Beth. I don't know what happened.
No problem, Mary.
That's okay. It happens.
So the Board has reviewed and discussed the North Branford High School and feasibility study performed by Q A and M, Architectural. And before we move to a vote, I just wanted to see if there are any questions. Did you all get the questions and answered in email?
Yes.
Okay. And did you get the new pricing?
Yeah.
I didn't know.
There was no new pricing?
It was in the email.
I'm trying to see if we...
Well, it was on the presentation that Rusty gave on the first.
Rusty is present in the conversation right now. So Rusty, if you want to just review the email that you had sent to Board Chair Papa Holzer, and just walk through some of the important points about looking at square footage, and we were looking to back down to get to the state requirement. And then we were also talking about the waiver letter that I'm gonna send to the state for the extension of the square footage over the amount that we have there. And then we can kind of focus the conversation around that, just so everyone hears the same thing from you.
Okay, sure. Good evening. So to start with, at the last meeting, we were at about 104,000 square feet net. And I think the comment was made that, well, it'd be nice to try and bring that number, especially the net cost of the building below or around the renovation cost. So we looked at the plans some more. We made some adjustments, and those adjustments ended up bringing the floor plan, the area, down to 102,200. So it's still over the state standards, which are 97,726, but it's within, you know, it's under 4,400 over the space standards. That resulted in the price coming down some more. And one of the things, so, I'm gonna look at a couple of documents here. So, so the numbers that I presented last, at the last meeting, were slightly higher than the numbers that you're seeing now, because we actually decreased that square footage. Is, and I did get a word back from the state today, that the canopy, the covered walkway would not be, would be eligible, would not be, would not get penalized for the space standards on that.
Oh, good. That's great.
Thank you Rusty, good job.
That's huge.
About 630,000 plus, so probably 750,000 all in. So one of the numbers that you don't have, because I put together several scenarios. I said, the base bid, which is just the building as is. There's a second option, that's the building plus as a net zero building, which adds money to the scope. There's a third option, and so we could take all the, there's one option that has the gable roof on there, and that's probably around, that's about 1.65 million that adds to the scope of the project. And then the final one was the covered walkway. So I called the one that had the covered walkway, the gable roof, the net zero, as, I called it the works. So everything's included. All the items that are in there were included. And that came out at, as it was getting my email, the net on that is 38.53 million, as it's, I'm looking at another screen behind this, my screen right here. So that was the most expensive of the three, which we have everything in there. As you're aware, that the base project itself, you know, is, is a 35.59. So the gross cost is 58.46, and the net cost on the base project is 35.59. And then, the project with the net zero increases the cost to 36.48. So as a net zero building, it's still less expensive than a renovation project, which is about 36.54. So that was one thing.
That's the renovate to new project, just so I want to be clear. So the renovate to new project would be 36.54. The complete renovation, new building, has three options, the base being 35.59, the top level being 38.15, is that what you said? Sorry, .48? It was point, because 36.48 was the middle one?
Right.
And what was the top one, 38.48?
Yes.
Okay.
And I did do another one today, where I didn't do the gable roof. I just did the net zero and the covered walkway. And that was sent out in an email today, and that price is, just give me a second. So that's 37.28.
37.28.
Yeah.
Okay. My last question, you're talking a lot about the gabled roof. Is that a pitched roof, or what's a gabled roof? Like what's?
It's a pitched roof like you have on the auditorium.
Okay, and what would the roof be if it wasn't a pitched roof?
It would just be a regular, you know, slope roof, within a quarter inch foot, or quarter to half inch per foot, which is fairly typical.
And what is the benefit of having, just, I'm just curious, and I know this will all be discussed down the line, but since, you know, we're moving towards passing a recommendation, I just want to be clear on the difference between the gable roof and the flat roof?
Essentially, yeah, flat roof. I mean, you know, there are some, some communities that feel that they need to have a gable, a slope roof, and that that's better. Yes, it sheds the water, but that roofs are also installed properly, which most of them are, as waterproof as well. So what gable roof does, it adds about 1.6 million to the cost of the project, increases volume, you've got to put rooftop equipment up there. And that means you've got to allocate and allow for that rooftop equipment to be accommodated. In our case, the orientation is going to be such that the, if we put photovoltaic panels up on the roof, they're not going to be at the best orientation. So there's some negatives to that. I think if there's something that you can give, that might be the one piece that is not an absolute must-have, unless there's a, you know, the community feels that that's so important.
Right, right. I mean, especially in the current climate, I want to just make sure we're looking at all of our options and getting the best school possible for the dollar, but that also is gonna hold and last over time.
I just want to interject, because it's important. We've lived through the renovate is new at the middle school, with the flat roof, with all the mechanicals on the roof. And anyone who's been following that project over the last several years knows the problem that we've had with water, and permeating and getting into the building. It's been a constant battle with that. I think in New England, if we're able to...
It's hard to hear Scott.
Can you hear me now?
No.
No?
Come over to my microphone and I'll move over.
I was just, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I think that what we've, you know, we've learned in, over the past several years with NBIS, when we did a renovate is new on that project, and it was, you know, fairly expensive in cost with the flat roof, we've had continuous problems with water permeating that flat roof, with all of the mechanical units being on top of that flat roof. That has been a nightmare over the last several years. So I just want to put that out there to the Board, that, you know, as I know that Shawna just said, we have, you know, one chance to do this, to do this right. If we can possibly think strategically about keeping water off of the roof in a gabled roof, that might be a direction to move forward, especially if we're not going to get charged for the walkway, that's not going to cut into our square footage. I think the pitched roof would probably be the best option we could add for bang for the buck over time, and not having to deal with a flat roof.
That's funny, because, and my, this is like bringing back to IA class in eighth grade, and being in New England, I, the one thing I learned in there is you always want a pitched roof.
See, you have a transparable skill there. So, one of the things I want to bring up too, and Rusty was mentioning, is when we, we make a recommendation for a new school, we're not approving the plan right now. That's down the road in a different step. I just want to talk about things, so there's dialogue, so we know what we're looking for as we move through the process. And things we could talk to town council about, so that they know we've done our due diligence, and they might have similar questions, so we can ask them. One of the other issues that we brought up last time, and I know it was hard to hear me, was the covered walkway. And it was a possibility that the state was going to consider the covered walkway square footage. And Rusty was saying earlier in the conversation, that they are not going to count that as square footage, so it will be reimbursable.
So Shawna, when you say covered walkway, is that the catwalk that's already there?
Nope, it's not the catwalk. That's gonna, I believe that's gonna be taken down.
The catwalk will come down.
I couldn't hear you guys at last meeting. So I had a question on the catwalk, and then I had a question on the auditorium, because I know something was said about that, and I couldn't hear anything during last meeting.
Let me, let me just, I'll answer that for Shawna. So the catwalk that currently connects the auditorium to the high school will come down. There will be, there will be a road that will intersect between the two sites, and there will be a covered walkway that will be approximately 100 yards, or just under 300 feet, that will go to the new site of the building. And we were looking at solar panels to put on the top of that covered walk as well, to try to capture some energy. So it will, it would keep people covered for about 95% of the walk over to the auditorium. The auditorium space would then be counted towards NBIS, so we would not be penalized for having the auditorium as square footage for the high school.
Which is huge.
Okay.
Okay, does that help?
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question on that walkway. Is it gonna have just a canopy on it, or is it gonna be all enclosed in, all the way to the auditorium?
I believe it will not be totally enclosed. It will be an overhead canopy, just to keep the people dry on the inside, you know, while walking to and from. Remember that that space would only be used for students that have something going on in the auditorium. You know, it doesn't get a great deal of usage right now, other than a couple of classes that are located in the auditorium. So it's, it's really for teachers going back and forth that are instructing classes during the day.
Yeah, but teaching will be going back and forth during inclement weather as well, snow, rain, everything else.
Right, so we have, that's why we have the covered walkway. That's why we're putting in the covered walkway. And that's why it was super important for us to figure out whether it was going to be counted as square footage, because just for ethical purposes and morale for the teachers and our students, we couldn't not have some kind of covered walkway, so that they can move, especially since we moved to a new, a new schedule where we're sharing faculty and developing new classes, so that the high school, the high school students and the middle school students are sharing teachers, so.
Shawna?
Yeah.
Wasn't there, it's Beth, wasn't there something mentioned that the walkway would, or could have solar panels that could help to free the electrical plus?
Yep.
Yeah, Scott said that.
Yep, exactly. So we're looking at putting solar panels on top of the covered walkway to capture some energy. The other area we were looking at, and I know I've been talking to some of you about this, is the square footage was over. At our first glance, it was, what was it at the first, do you remember at the first look, 109,000?
Rusty, if you have your numbers in front of you, we've pared down to try to get to that magic number for the state reimbursement rate with our student population. Can you, can you just?
What was the original?
Walk the Board through?
So it was a little over 106,000 net square feet, and it's the net that matters in the first iteration that we presented. The second iteration that we presented at the last meeting was 104,000 and change, and now we're down to 102,200. Now, some of the things that we did to get there is we did eliminate some classrooms, we took the collaboration rooms, and for instance, one is a shared space between English and Social Studies, the other one is a shared space as a health classroom plus Word Language, basically done in a way that, because those departments are on that level. So Word Language and Health would be on that third level, English and Social Studies are on the second level. So that's one way we took some space out. We did eliminate, I think one of the, we had three rooms for bridges, and we made that two. We looked at, we decreased some of this square footage out of the technology education space, and just looked at other ways of make the building even more efficient, and that's how we got the number down to 102,200.
So with, your experience is doing this for many years, and going before the State Board of Ed with these types of scenarios, our letter for the waiver, for the difference in the space, are you confident and comfortable right now with where we're at with this, this last number that's been presented?
Well, I responded to Michelle in that letter, basically, you know, indicating to her how we've really brought that number down from 106 to 102, and really trying to address all her concerns. One of the comments was about the science, that we had six science labs, and she said, why do we need six, and can we do five? So that's going to help. And you know, usually what happens with this process is, they get the letter from you, Scott, and then, then they'll, you know, want to sit down and really discuss the various spaces. In some ways, we've had that discussion ahead of time. At our first meeting, it was very encouraging. They made it sound like it shouldn't be a big deal to get a space standard waiver, but then on our subsequent meeting, they weren't, they were being a little, a little hesitant, and primarily because they were saying, look, we're giving you the whole auditorium space that technically could be considered part of the high school, because the high school would use it. So there's, there's sort of in this negotiating mode. So can I say, will we get 100% of it? In the past, I would have said yes, just based on some of the responses we've had in the last month or so. I want to be a little cautious about whether we're, we're gonna get that 4,000 square feet.
Okay.
Hoping we get a part of it at least, because it's not, you know, they need to demonstrate to us why we shouldn't be able to, or entitled to.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
So I just want to let the Board know, so we're about 4,400 square feet over. The goal is to get the waiver, but as I've been already speaking with Scott a little bit today about how we would reduce it if we didn't get the waiver, because, you know, being fiscally responsible, I think that there might be other places to pare down. One of the places we thought, and I know other Board members have expressed this as well, is the lecture space. There's three areas to congregate, and that might be an area we can pull back on. And I know that Scott has reached out to the administrators, and they seem to feel that that would be an area too. So the closer we can get to that 97, if we cannot get that waiver, the better off and more comfortable we're gonna feel. But as I want to just reiterate to the Board, that we don't have to make, or we're not finalizing plans now. We are just making a recommendation based on what the conversations have been with the state, with Rusty, with Scott, and the information that we've been given on, what is the most responsible and best for our community, what our recommendation is to move forward. And then all of the fine details continue to get worked through in a process, in a very, I guess, detailed process. It's really laid out for us, so it's not like we're making up the plan. The state has it laid out. Am I correct on all this Rusty?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
But you do have to finalize that number before you submit your application.
So, right, so I have a question. So for tonight, like, if there's square footage that we need to take out, do we have to take it out before, before we make a motion to approve? it out before, before we make a motion to approve a new school?
No, Carolyn, once the town gives us an okay, like we're just saying it to the town, hey, this is our recommendation. Once the town goes in, now we're getting our nitty gritty before we go to the state.
Okay.
So if, and I'll echo just with, with Shawna saying, so the, the part about getting down to the, I'm going to submit a waiver request. I wanted to have this meeting first, and Rusty and I have worked on a letter that will be going out to the state on Monday. So based upon the conversations tonight, we'll submit that on Monday. And then, we've already had some conversations about ideas as what Shawna was alluding to with space within the existing structure. If we did not get the waiver and had to back it down, we've got an area that we think, we're, we're really trying to preserve the programs for our students and we really pride ourselves on a lot of our electives and specials. So if we have to pick and choose and do let's make a deal, we think that we have an area that we could live without and it wouldn't hinder, you know, students getting the, the classes and the choices and the areas for instruction.
I, I have a question on that. So if you and Rusty are going to submit a letter, you're going to be submitting a letter to the state?
Yes.
And in that letter, are you going to announce what the square footage is you're looking for?
We're going to announce why we are over the square footage of 97,000 square feet, and we're going to have commentary for each individual area that speaks to why it's important that we do have this many classes or this area. So then they'll take that and they'll look at it and say, you know what, they, these people have good points with the programs that they're running and what they want to do. We're going to waive that 4,000 plus square footage and allow them to do it and reimburse.
So, so what is the motion supposed to be tonight that we go with 102,000, 104,000, 106,000? Or we're not, we're not going to put the square footage on the table tonight?
We're not putting the square footage. We're just making a recommendation of whether we want to do renovate is new, build new, or what was the third option? I can't even remember that option. It was.
Just repair.
Repair, it was repair, we'll call it.
And, and Rusty, I know that what you're going to say next in your conversation, I shouldn't say that, but what the state made very clear to us in that phone conversation that we were on with the state, if you want to share, I think it'll help the board understand what, what they're thinking with our choices.
Oh, no, they definitely, they said absolutely not to the first option, the maintain option. They looked at the renovate is new option and they said where, you know, it's, it would be very disruptive to education and they basically, the three architects on the, on the team said, all came down in favor of the new building. They said just educationally, in terms of the new space, the disruption to education, the potential for delays and cost overruns to the hazmat are all eliminated in this approach, and they felt that it would be the best approach.
Thank you.
And, and so, board, what we were trying to do really hard on our end is make sure the new building was less than or equal to marginally over the renovate is new option so that we were giving the town's taxpayers a, a new product, a new school, and really, really drilling down on it. We can play around with square footage and numbers in a new building, but we really can't do that in a renovate to new project the same way. And we're hoping that this new school will last another 50 years and be well maintained.
Yeah.
Keep, keep in mind, folks, that the current high school is about 120,000 square feet, Rusty?
It would be, in the various areas we have.
The current one that we're in.
Parts of it, currently it's about 124,000.
124, right.
By demolishing parts of it, we were getting it down to 118 and 115 respectively in the other two.
Right, so, so you look at, if, if you're looking at being spatially responsible with, you know, the state's guidelines, going from 124,000 down to, you know, our projected number that we're trying to get to, we're eliminating over 20,000 square feet.
The other thing is that the net zero approach, you know, as we reduce the size of the building, that means you're using it less energy and then we're going to be a geothermal approach, which, you know, in some, we haven't run all the models and that would come later on, but would have to, just from a preliminary basis, basis, based on the utilization, you know, the cost utilization of fossil fuel that you currently have, we were looking at a seven to nine year payback closer to the seven year in terms of the payback for the net zero and after that, you know, it's all savings.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have a couple of comments I would like to make, but I don't know if you want me to make a motion first and then make the comments under discussion?
Let Mar, let Marcy.
Ask my questions?
And then, then the board can ask theirs as we move through.
Yeah, while we have Rusty.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, first off, I wanted to thank Shawna and Scott for all your time and efforts, especially during this pandemic, to move this project forward and, and holding strong on it. I know you guys have put a lot of, lot of time into this and I don't really think people realize how much time has gone into it, so thank you. For those at home, there was a committee formed last year consisting of the town manager, a couple council members, superintendent, and a three, I think there was three council members and three board members. We interviewed firms and we unanimously selected QA and M to do this facility study. I think they did a great job. I realize this is a very difficult economic climate, but with that said, it has been time for a new high school for years, but this is the time. I, I know people are losing jobs and we pray it's just temporary and people get their jobs back. Everything is aligning for us right now. The fact that they're not counting the covered walkway in our square footage, that they're not counting the auditorium towards the high school, the reimbursement rate, everything is working for us now. And if you go to the Totucket TV and watch the Board of Ed virtual meeting from April 1st where QA and M gave an updated presentation, you can see the numbers, they were really clear. I mean, it's definitely in our favor. Scott, have you had any conversations with Anthony Esposito regarding what it will do to taxes? Because I think knowing the impact it will have on taxes will help people make an educated decision. I, I, people hear these numbers of 38 million, 39 million, talk of a police station and communication center, which we need just as much. Okay, people hear these numbers and they're getting scared, but, you know, have you had any conversations with Anthony Esposito? He's the number guy and he'd be able to let us know. I had a conversation with him that's supposed, that's off the record, so I'm wondering if you had one.
On the record, yes. We've, I've had conversation with Anthony. Just looking at scenario planning, having lived through the middle school renovation, I inherited that several years ago and I wasn't there at the beginning of it, but I've lived through these projects before. You have different ways of phasing your bonding and Anthony was confident in that when this started in probably '21, '22 and moving forward, this is probably a three-year project that would be split over those three years, so you're not front-loading a lot of your money upfront in the beginning, that you ease into a project of this scale. So there's many ways to do it, there's many creative ways that the taxpayer doesn't get the full burden upfront and it goes over time. We also have our debt bond coming down in '24, '25, I think is when it, it starts to really decline. So as, as you did mention, the timing is right, our reimbursement rate is at a very good level right now.
Our bond rating too.
Our bond rating. We don't have a crystal ball. I'm not here to make predictions. I know that whenever you take on something like this, it's never a good time and, and we don't know if next year would be a better time. We only know that construction costs are going to go up each year and each year that you put this out, you extend another year for when you're going to put a shovel in the ground. And Rusty, I would invite you to, with your vast experience over, you know, 30-plus years of doing this, to comment on that.
Well, actually, it was interesting when I mentioned that when we were at this, when we were meeting with the state, they were concerned about moving this project along now rather than waiting on it. And their attitude is that you're going to hit the ground running, you know, the, the planning time is now and, you know, construction, this is going to, this environment is going to create a more competitive bid environment for us. So they were, and I don't know if there was, they were also looking at it from employment point of view, that they wanted to make sure that there was, there was work that's being prepared to be bid for the next year, but they were certainly suggesting it. And in my conversations with a lot of the construction managers that I work with, they were all looking at their, their numbers and revising them and said, you know, coming out for this following year as a, as a bid environment, you're going to have much better numbers than, than the year after that because beyond that point, everybody's going to be back up and busy. So, you know, my experiences move quickly, take advantage of the downturn sometimes. I mean, people that went ahead with their projects in 2008 came in millions of dollars under budget and that, that was a reality, I mean, back then. And then, about three or four years later, everybody was coming in over budget because things had picked up, you know, so those are just the realities of, of construction and sometimes it's best to take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Rusty?
Go ahead, Beth.
I have a question. Was there not also a discussion that the way the enrollment numbers are now, that they would probably go down and we'd get less reimbursement from the state?
Yes, actually, you're right. I think I presented that at the last, at the first meeting, that after this year, your number goes down to 499, which means that you've then got to reduce your building down to 93,000 square feet to, to be able to meet that. So, and, and that was, that's going to be almost impossible to do. I mean, even where we are right now, remember, the, this is just a, the, the state space standard is not an educational standard, it's just a formula for funding. So whereas people think that we should be trying to achieve that, it's not a realistic formula to provide good educational spaces, it's more a formula to say, how do we, you know, limit state funding for these projects? So if you go down to 93,000, yes, you've lost, you know, you've gone from 524 down to 499, you lost 25 kids, but your gym doesn't get any smaller, none of your other spaces get any smaller. So it's the, how do you do that, you know? And that's, that's one of, that would be a true disadvantage going forward.
Yeah, I, I just thought, to bring that up so that the public knows that that's one of the reasons why we were trying to move it along this year as opposed to waiting, like there is no opportune time, but this seems to be one.
Thank you, Beth.
And then one more question for you, Scott. If you could just, I, I don't want to be putting you on the spot, but there have been comments by some people, especially over Facebook, after the video came out and the tours came out, that we don't deserve a new building because we didn't take care of what we had, that we let it get into that condition. Do you want to comment on that?
Well, I, I guess when you look at the age of the building, I, I think the building is clean. I think our, our administrators and our staff and our students take very good care of the building, but I think when you get to be, you know, past, I have to be careful I say this, when you have a building that gets to be past 60 years of age and you have a number of students and faculty and community members, you know, trampling through it every day over time, you, you get to a, a point where you've put a new roof on the building, you're putting a new elevator, you've put a new heating system in and it's still not functioning or still having problems. We're, we're throwing, you know, bad money at bad problems that are only going to continue and I, I don't think it's any one person's fault or, I, I think a lot of people have worked hard to repair and keep that building going as long as it's been running. It's, it's just time and it has to be the flagship school, it has to be the pride of your community. If you look at any other surrounding town within a 20 or 30 mile radius, all of these high schools have been either renovated or they're new buildings. Some have been, I mean, when you look at like a Guilford High School and what they've done there, and that's Taj Mahal. We're saying that we, we want an efficient, responsible educational building for our students and staff and, you know, you mentioned QA and M, I think they've put together a really good product for, for the, for the community that is all of those things. So I, I think it's just time. It's time to, to say goodbye to the building that many had great memories in and time to move on to a new building to start great memories in.
Scott, I mean, if I may, the, the problems with the building are not simply maintenance type problems, they're infrastructure problems. This building, these buildings that were built in the 60s were not built in, in the best possible way. I mean, for instance, the, your problem with the underground plumbing, that's not a maintenance issue, it's just that the pipes have, have settled and so you've got dips and you, and the plumbing is, you know, it flows downhill and now it doesn't flow downhill. The, the moisture coming up through the floor is just a sign of the times when it was built, you had asbestos floors and asbestos didn't allow the moisture to come through. Now you have to remove the asbestos and you can't use those types of hazmat type products to, to contain the vapor coming into the building. Things like the structure, that's, you know, the building was designed fairly inexpensively, maybe that's the right word for it? I mean, they, they didn't spend, put a lot of effort into the money.
Lower standards back then. You couldn't do today.
You know, the, the windows, wall system, those are all things that are inherent to the building. They're not, they're not really indicative, indicating bad maintenance of the building.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Board members, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I have a stupid question.
No question is stupid, Vince.
If they're going to tear down the existing building, is there any way that we would get reimbursed for materials that could be salvaged and used? You know, other companies would come and buy the materials, you know, whether it be the bricks, the steel beams or whatever, is there any way we could do that so we can have a savings in that respect?
Sims.
Vince, we're going to, we're going to deliver all of the bricks to your house and drop them in your backyard. No, that's a Rusty question. I don't believe so. I think once they get into demolition, they don't do it to preserve anything and I may be wrong, but I think everything gets demolished and taken away. It's interesting, it's, it's really not a lot of money to demolish as part of this whole project. Rusty, do you want to pick up on that?
And, and, you know, if you try to do demolition where you're trying to preserve things, it ends up costing you a lot more.
Right.
Unfortunately, even though it's the right, you know, the good thing to do.
You're going to knock it down.
But we will.
Recycle it.
Yeah, that, well, that's exactly where I was going. They, the time factors are, are pretty savvy. They're going to factor into their price in the demolition what all steel that they can recycle and sell back. So, you know, that's all a matter of how we write the specifications. We don't want to, you don't want to take on that role of, of trying to sell it. You want to benefit from the savings that the contractors will be demolishing it and selling it themselves, will incorporate it into, into their bids.
Okay, like I said, I was curious about that.
Hey Vince, I do have to say with the headset, you look like a famous dish jockey. I like that look.
Which, which famous dish jockey?
I'm not going to say it.
Don't tell me he's dead. Don't tell me he's dead.
He's alive and going strong.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is our gym the right size?
Yes, believe me, we're not doing that again, Carolyn, with the middle school.
I was like, just checking.
So the gym will be the official CIAC high school size with adequate seating and room on the sides for storage, yes.
I was thinking, we don't have room to air twice.
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
Good point.
Yeah, thank you.
If there are no questions from me, I, I actually have another meeting to go on to.
Rusty, thank you so much for being a part of it tonight. And this was short notice. I know that, you know, you put some things, we really appreciate you being here.
Absolutely.
Really.
Happy Easter.
Thank you, Rusty, very much.
Happy Easter, yes.
Happy Easter.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to approve option number three, a new North Branford High School facility. Current reimbursement for 3.93%. a new North Bramford High School facility, current reimbursement 4.93% and to develop a new right-sized high school facility on the existing site that accommodates the educational programs in a 21st-century learning environment.
I second. Any discussion? Mary, can you do the roll call vote?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Chairman Pappa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Candelaora?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Gina Bosomo?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Marcy Naprio?
Absolutely.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to thank the board for your patience and support through this entire process. I mean, I think it's obvious you know the condition of where the building's at and how important it is for our school, community, and our children and our staff. So I thank you for keeping them in the forefront of all your decision-making and supporting them. And this is just a part of the process, but it's a big step. It's one that we had to take. And it's the, in my 11 years, this is the furthest that we've gotten to with these steps with this board. So I truly appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to add to thanking Shawna because I think she was really the person to get this up and going after looking at the basement with all the water and everything where people thought it was okay. And she brought it to a lot of people's attention. So Shawna, thank you for doing that and doing all your footwork, legwork, no pun intended.
Yes, thank you, Shawna.
Yeah, my pleasure. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks everyone. Happy Easter to everyone.
Happy Easter.
Thank you. Be safe, enjoy.
Bye-bye.
Bye.